Good evening and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Regular Session Meeting for Thursday, January 17th, 2019. I just wanted to remind everybody, a recording device will be used during this meeting, and we'll open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment for non-agenda items. I just wanted to remind everybody, rules of conduct for public meetings established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Do we have any public comment for non-agenda items?
I do. What do we need to do to get on the ballot in November to not be a dry township?
It's not in November, so there's a cycle.
It's in the primary.
Well, it's what's called the municipal election year, which is an off-year, and it has to be, there has to be like a petition that's filed to put it on the primary ballot, basically.
Okay. So, it's so many signatures, and then it goes through, I believe, voter services, and then...
I think it actually goes to Harrisburg somewhere, and it has to get approved. I'm not sure about all the details. I know that Michelangelo's had a petition that they were circulating, and if my recollection is correct, they had a law firm out of Harrisburg that was handling that, and for some reason the law firm missed the deadline of getting it filed, which is why it wasn't on that particular ballot. But municipal elections are every two years or every four years?
Two.
Every two years, so...
And Applecross did the same thing for their...
Yeah, but Applecross was a little different. It did not pertain to the entire township. There is a special exception, or a special provision, within the liquor code that applies to golf course facilities.
Okay. So, it would be 20, 2020?
I doubt it's 2020 because...
Oh, it's odd years.
Yeah, it is.
So, it's this year. They'd have to, it's gotta be 145 days before the election, which means it's gotta be, they've gotta get the petition in circulated, and I think it also does go to voter services to be put on the ballot, but...
Somebody has to approve it before it goes on the ballot.
Right.
And it's not just voter services.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure what all the details are.
I didn't know if we had to deal with a resolution, or like, anyone?
It's actually, the township has nothing to do with it.
Okay. Gotcha. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ross?
Can you give us a quick update on the giant hero laws and what the next one is? What the next one is?
I didn't hear, I was gonna say. I haven't noticed about it.
Yeah, so I'll let, I stepped out early on the, we had our, we did have a meeting Tuesday, and I had to leave an hour and a half before the end of it. We started around 9:00 a.m., and I believe it went on until about 4...
4 o'clock we stopped, yeah.
So, there will be a continuing meeting next Tuesday, or the...
22nd.
Yeah, the 22nd, and then...
From 8:00 to 2:00.
And then there's...
Video.
Yeah, there is video online, if you so choose, to watch it for the day. And then we're in discussions now if it carries over for another day as well. So, right now it's looking, beginning of February, for if it has to go to another day.
You know, we have...
When is it due on something?
Yeah, some year. It's already scheduled for the 22nd, next Tuesday, and then if it has to go...
Right, right.
Another, then it's February 7th after the work session.
Yeah, and I think there's some...
Well, that was proposed, but I'm not sure. I haven't seen all the emails.
At the conclusion of all these hearings, what's the next step in township?
So...
How do you see it?
Right.
I don't know if it can be changed, but any...
Well, then the board, it would be on the board's agenda for a public meeting after the hearings are concluded.
Public meeting that approve or disapprove of the...
To consider that, right.
That's what I thought, so I can see out on regular terms.
Yep, yep, and I can tell you, it's moving at a snail's pace, but we're crossing, we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is to make sure we're fair to everybody, so... Anybody else for public comment for non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the previous meetings. Make a motion that we, I'm sorry, we have December 6th, 2018.
Make a motion that they be approved as submitted.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 December 20th, 2018.
Move that they be approved as submitted.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The January 2nd, I'm gonna...
Seven.
Yeah, it says 2nd on here.
Okay, 7, yeah. I'm gonna recuse myself, 'cause I did it via telephone call, but...
I don't think that precludes you from participating.
No, you participated.
Yeah, but I, okay, all right. So, the January 7th, 2019.
I make a motion they be approved as submitted.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was our reorg meeting. Planning Commission, December 5th, 2018.
Motion that they be approved as submitted.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Treasurer's report.
Thank you. Bank account balances as of January 17th, 2019 are as follows. General fund checking, $493,347.44. General fund investment, $1,126,438.85. State fund bank accounts, $155,876.88. Open space referendum, $2,373,046.55. Open space, $793,022.23. Traffic impact, $1,618,770.48. And there are a total of 99 checks in need of approval for the general fund and four for the state fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a moment to look at the finances.
I'll make a motion that we approve the dispersments as requested.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Assistant, I'm sorry, Township Manager's, Township Manager's report.
You can go to him first, if you want. Thank you. If you walked in the door, you noticed that we're sponsoring another Red Cross Blood Drive on Tuesday, February the 5th. The event will be held in McCausland Hall, although the sign says, the Township Meeting Hall, it's actually McCausland Hall, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Joe, put that in your notes, please. And don't call me that it says you're running late. Pre-registration is highly recommended or encouraged. We hope to have a well-attended event, as we have in the past. You can register online at redcrossblood.org and search for the sponsor code EBRANDYWINE. We recently received a letter from the Attorney General, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the Attorney General's office, advising that our woodland protection standards and our zoning ordinance, in their opinion, violated portions of the agricultural, community, and rural environment law, also known as ACRE. The township is not the first that's had this type of letter sent to it. The first municipality in Chester County, rather. There's been several, so we have company. Myself, David Sweet, John Thielacher from Brandywine Conservancy, met with our solicitor, Kristen Camp, last Thursday afternoon, to discuss a model ordinance that Brandywine Conservancy has put the final touches on, that hopefully will address the, this issue. It's a model timber harvest ordinance that Brandywine Conservancy worked with, the forestry industry, forestry products industry, loggers. Penn State University has an agricultural division. They were involved in one of the conference calls, but they've been meeting for two years. They have a model ordinance that we're proposing to the Attorney General, or the Senior Deputy Attorney General, Mr. Willig, as our answer to replace our existing ordinance language and comply with our ACRE regulations. We expect to have a draft ready in late February, submit to the county planning commission for review, and hopefully a final draft ready for the board's consideration in April. Our solicitor did write a letter to Mr. Willig, and with that included the draft ordinance that we hope will get comments back from him that he feels that they're acceptable. Manager Casey Lilon from West Koschen Township, who's also an East Brandywine Township resident, circulated an email Monday, asking if municipalities were interested in joining a group effort for renewal of their respective Verizon cable TV franchise agreements. Through Wednesday evening, there's 15 municipalities that have expressed interest in participating in this joint venture. The initial proposal is to hire Cohen Law Group out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, who specialize in cable TV, wireless, and telecommunications issues. The township, me specifically, has worked with that law firm previously. We're still waiting on an audit of our 2016 Verizon franchise fees to make sure that Verizon is turning over the proper amount to us, and that's been a problem, so that is now in federal court, with, I think, West Bradford Township participated, and three other municipalities from Allegheny County, north of Pittsburgh. So, Kerry Vargo from Upper Euclid, who's also interested in this project, has reached out to the Cohen Law Group and will provide additional information on the probable cost per municipality, a timeline, and other related items in a proposal. And in 2011, we had 13 municipalities participate in a similar joint venture for the Comcast franchise agreement. Basically, we came up with a boilerplate agreement, the municipalities could pick and choose different items that applied to them, such as the city of Coachwell has their own cable TV channel, so they want different things than East Brandywine, or Valley, or West Bradford Township they want. I helped coordinate that, and it was very successful. Dealing with these cable TV organizations isn't easy, and that's why having a special law firm that specializes in these is very helpful, so hopefully we'll have the same success, and once I get more information, I will share it with the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luke, Assistant Township Manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have just one item to brief you on in my report this evening. Staff has executed a quote in the amount of $34,489 for 700 Toter brand recycle carts, based on the Commonwealth Co-Stars contract number 17-08. This contract is with Toter LLC of Statesville, North Carolina. The township cart inventory is currently critically low, and we had been waiting for the beginning of this year's budget to make the purchase. As part of the Co-Stars program, there's no need to solicit competitive bids, even though the purchase price is in excess of the bidding threshold. When funds are due, the purchase will be paid for from the capital reserve fund. This is a budgeted item. In 2016, the township received generous Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection grant funding to replace our old small bins with new Toter brand single-stream carts that have a larger capacity, hinged lids, and are compatible with automation, automated collection technology. At the time, we purchased two sizes, 64 and 35 gallon containers. All of the carts that I have just ordered will be of the 64 gallon variety. It also appears that the original 2016 shipment was short some 44 pairs of wheels, an inventory shortage that we did not notice until the supply dwindled to, ran out of wheels. Toter has agreed to provide these to make the original carts work at no cost with the new order. I have confirmed that the same source of grant funding, which is Act 101, Section 902 Program Grant, can be applied retroactively. If we are awarded this funding, the state will pay up to 90% of the costs. I'm contemplating rolling in a ordinance update for our recycling ordinance into the grant application, and I'd like to bring that to the board's attention. Clearly, setting a public policy is the board's domain. My rationale for suggesting doing the two things at once is the grants will pay up to 90% of the costs of the purchase, but if you define the project in such a way that includes soft costs, like legal and other items, that could be your local match. So, in other words, if we need to update the ordinance, we were gonna do the ordinance anyway, we can use those costs to offset the costs, that could be our local match for the purchase of the Toters. There's, the ordinance updates are pretty straightforward. We just need to describe that we have new equipment that's on site, and just take a look at, make sure we're compliant with Act 101, so that we continue to be eligible for grant funding. So, when I prepare the grant, I'd like to know that the board would support a generic suggestion to review the grant, review our ordinance as part of that grant application.
Is the Toters only for the, is the grant only applicable for recycling bins? So, in other words, trash bins that we could get to rolling?
Well, the grant will fund a number of things. The original grant also included an education component about, so that we could mail postcards to residents to explain that the new Toters were coming, and that it was no longer necessary to separate, and some of the costs we incurred as part of our education, for example, an article in our newsletter, was used as the local match for that 2016 purchase. Well, we were gonna send a newsletter either way, so it was wise of us to use that as the local match on the grant. So, I'm always looking for grant-eligible things that we can roll into that to serve as our 10% local match. So, if I can go back to your original question, education is eligible, recycle equipment is eligible, and legal costs relative to changing the ordinance are eligible.
But no trash.
As I was saying, so the answer's no to trash cans.
Because I think it would be nice, at some point, we discuss that, to have trash cans and one of each, and it seems like that's the way the trash companies are going now, with the, you know, with the machines that lift them up and dump them accordingly, so I was just thinking aloud, and I wondered if it would help with the issue with the blowing of trash cans over and so on and so forth in the windy days here, if you had one trash can rather than two or three smaller ones.
Unfortunately, that source of funds can't be used for trash collection, but we are in year five of a five-year waste hauler contract with Republic Services, so this year we will need to bid out, as required by the Second Class Township Code, solid waste haulers. And I'm thinking part of that RFP, there's two things that we could do that would be different than the current contract. One, consider doing a multi-municipal application with West Brandywine or any other adjacent municipality who's on the same schedule, to perhaps save money in terms of total volume of solid waste. And the second thing is to work in a capital purchase in such a way, so we would buy the trash cans and then basically finance them over the five-year new contract. So, in that way, because if we're, this is 700 containers for $34,000. If you bought all 3,000 housing units we'd need, we're, you know, it's, you're, it's about a quarter million dollars probably by the time. You would also have to work in delivery and assembly of all of those. This particular order doesn't involve delivery, so, because it's just gonna sit in our lot until housing units come online.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we ratify the purchase of 700 recycling carts from Toter LLC of Statesville, North Carolina, in the amount of $34,489.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And to answer Luke's other question, I would, I would be in favor of trying to roll in any costs associated with the ordinance update into that grant application.
I agree.
I agree.
Building inspection report.
Okay, for the month of December, 2018, a total of 14 building permits issued, one zoning permit. There were 16 use and occupancy permits issued, 129 inspections completed, 20 failed inspections. Total fees collected by the building department, $9,098.50. And for the year, a total of 358 building permits, 44 zoning permits were issued. There were a total of 228 use and occupancy permits that were issued. Total inspections, 2,108, 115 failed inspections. Total fees collected by the building department for the year, $436,351.3. Both of those reports respectfully submitted by Marian King, Building Cone Secretary.
Thank you. I don't see Matt, so I'm assuming you'll be handling the Roadmaster report as well?
His report would be that they're all home sleeping, waiting for the snow to stop.
Got it, understood. Chief for the East Brandywine Township Police Department report.
Good evening. The police report for December 2018. The department had 2,454 recorded incidents. We investigated, completed 192 investigations, had two criminal arrests, zero summary arrests. We had two warrant arrests. There were no juvenile petitions for the month. We investigated six traffic accidents, issued 38 traffic citations, 59 traffic warnings, and officers logged 7,514 miles of patrol. We did not have any training conducted during the month of December. You have copies of all the attachments and enclosing, and I know this is from the township also. I would just like to publicly send our condolences to Downingtown Borough and their fire police and EMS and, fire EMS and police departments on the passing of retired police chief Jim McGowan. Those condolences also go out to his family. As you know, he was a long-term police chief. Jim and I worked on many projects, and I think it's safe for me to say that it was a sudden passing, and we want them to know they're in our thoughts and prayers. Chief Holland has recently, this week, sent out a mutual aid request. He has specifically reached out to me for some assistance with a supervising officer, and so I just want the board to know that I have authorized Corporal Steve Tyree, who has a very intimate knowledge of the borough, to go down and assist them on Friday night, beginning midnight through noon on Saturday, to work the borough with some other officers from surrounding municipalities, and Steve will most likely be in charge of those patrols.
Thank you very much. East Brandywine Fire Department report.
Good evening. The fire report for the month of December, we had 78 total incidents, 27 fire, 52 medical. In East Brandywine Township, we had 12 fire and 16 medical. We responded to outside agencies a total of 10 times. Average personnel responding to calls was 10. Fuel usage was 191 gallons of East Brandywine fuel. And I should note that you probably see an increase of fuel usage for the month, because we're still doing driver training on the new engine and the new ladder. We had three training sessions with 15 personnel each. News to note for the board, last night at Applecross, we held our officer installation dinner. The upper chiefs remain the same, for Vince D'Amico is the fire chief, myself is deputy chief, Joe Monastair is assistant chief, Mr. Colmeyer in the audience is the EMS captain. The fire company finished the year with 900 calls for service, of which, I'm happy to announce, he just happens to be here, Mr. Colmeyer was the top responder with 495 calls for service, which is just phenomenal.
He must be retired.
A couple of updates on the new apparatus. Engine 492 is in service and has responded to 10 or 11 calls so far. We've been told that ladder 49 is due to come back to the station the last week of January, first week of February. We unfortunately sent it up there to have all the tools placed on the truck and mounted, only to go over the holiday season, and people were taking off, so we were at Glick's mercy with that. If you ride by the fire station right now, you may see all the cones in the front lot. We can't catch a break right down there right now. The huge radio tower that sits on the side of the station is imminently going to fall. We had it inspected, it is beyond repair. Three bolts on the base, and the base are rotted away, and two of the other cables are rotted away. We've contracted with a firm to come out next Thursday at their earliest convenient, at their earliest time, to take the remaining radio antennas off and mount them to the roof and take the tower down. They claim that it could fall at any moment, so it's a huge hazard, so the whole area is coned off, so nobody parks there. I think I brought before the board that we were building a gear room. The gear room is coming along very nicely. We'll be able to have everybody down to see the new ladder truck in the gear room, probably at the end of the month, but that construction's underway down there and going well. And that's the end of my report. If you have any questions.
Here's the plan, to replace the tower, or...
The nice thing, Mr. Fisher, is, is that the radio communications that are of this time period don't require that tower to be in place.
Good, okay.
So, it can come down and stay down, but the antennas have to move to the roof.
Right, but I didn't know whether moving to the roof was temporary or...
No, 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 yeah, they'll just be mounted there now.
Thank you.
Yep.
You have a question?
Mr. Colmeyer.
I would like to mention that Mr. Edwards had 400 calls.
Oh.
Well, thank you both for your service. It's incredible, those numbers. Old business. I don't think we have any, so we'll move on to new business. Household hazardous waste collection program participant, and I guess that's Luke again.
Yes, this is another item related to the Township Solid Waste Program. We have a solicitation to participate in the Chester County household hazardous waste program. This is a multi-municipal effort to host six household hazardous waste collections at various locations throughout the county over the course of each year. We have participated as far back as 2013. Basically, this is an opportunity for residents to safely dispose of anything in their house that's marked hazardous or... their house that's marked hazardous or flammable, or, yes, this could be oil-based paints, this can be pesticides, this could be fertilizers. These things don't belong in the waste stream that goes to the, to the landfill, and we're able to reach more people by, by pooling our efforts. I would respectfully ask the Board's permission to participate in the 2019 program. As you can see from the letter, they're not able to quote a price. I'd like to give you a range of the last few years. It's ranged between $697 and $739 to participate in the program, and then typically the sponsors receive DEP funding that pays for half of it, and so we'll typically get a check from, from the Solid Waste Authority in an amount that's half of what we paid to participate that year.
Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a fantastic idea.
The first year we participated, we had Brandywine Wallace as a local site, and the project, it went off just beautifully. That's, that's a great facility. Unfortunately, the vendor left numerous oil stains on their playground parking area. So we haven't done that since. They did come back and clean it all up, but...
What about the grab, what about the, the park lot across the street is gravel?
You know, if they spill oil, you don't want to go and down.
They require a hard surface because...
To clean it, yeah.
Well, it's not to clean it necessarily. They, they put the material in carts that they wheel to different areas that they have set up.
What about Matt's new tennis courts?
It's not nearly big enough, but it's, it's a bargain to participate in that because it's not just Chester County, it's all five municipalities, including City of Philadelphia, and there's different places within Chester County you can go. The last one of the year is always in October at the Government Services Center in West, Westchester, or Westtown, so...
I think they also usually take TVs to the old...
Well, actually, in the last two years, they've stopped taking the electrical goods. The, 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 the new covered device act that the legislature passed is supposed to make so that the manufacturers of goods will take the goods back. Now, whether that's happened is debatable. We're seeing more, you know, televisions on the side of the road and the like, you get some legal dumping. The, the multi-municipal shredding event that the Township hosts, which is traditionally at the Kmart parking lot, does have an electrical goods take there.
And, and last year, that, I'm still trying to schedule that because I haven't gotten the electronics vendor to get back to me about that, but that was huge last year. They filled two 24-foot box trucks from bottom to top, palletized materials, mostly TVs, computer monitors, you name it, they, we, we got it. But there's Gaylord boxes just filled with keyboards and mice and other stuff. We had a survey, we had survey equipment turned in, which I'd never seen before, and of course, it didn't work, or I'd have kept it for Matt. But it, it's gotten huge in this year, I'm going to ask them if they can provide a third truck, because I don't think they got everything into both trucks. The first year we did it, they only had one truck and they had to come back, so I stayed down there with them until they got another truck back to palletize and fill it. So it's a, it's a big deal, and people see that and they come out in droves. Last, last, when did we do that, June? We had lines out to Bailey Road and out onto the shoulder of Business 30. People were having trouble getting into the Kmart.
Wow.
So we're, we're talking about how to better manage traffic in a couple of weeks. We're going to meet Dan Callen to talk about that, but it's, it's a, it's a big event. And the shredding event, we filled two of Wiggins' shredding trucks, which I think we've done that the last three years. First year we did it, we had only one truck, and we had to call for a second truck because it was so, so popular, so...
Well, you won't have any interference with the Kmart customers.
Unfortunately, no.
I'll make a motion that we commit to participating in the regional household hazardous waste collection program this year.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief, HVAC proposals.
As you, as you guys are aware, earlier, or a couple of months ago, we had some companies come in and start looking at the HVAC system on the police side of the building to address some of the water concerns we had and some of the duct work, and a lot of that has been cleaned up, fixed, and there were two items that were left over to be completed, and kind of got, they got, kind of got lost in the shuffle of everything, and I just wanted to request permission from the Board to have Matt proceed with having the balancing of the system completed by Butler Balancing Company, and their quota was $3,500, and to have the duct work re-insulated by Mattson Company for $2,700.
Yes, it's nice, it looks like Butler's from Thorndale, that's good.
Well, they're actually in East Brandywine.
How are they?
They, they're, their office is in their home. They're immediately adjacent to the Bonzo Mill Park.
Oh, okay.
So, and, and I know Don Butler very well, and he's going to do a great job for us, I knew that.
Good.
Didn't know that the system hadn't been balanced from the start, because Matt and I looked and looked and couldn't find anything that that was done, so this, this hopefully will be helpful in making the system more...
Any questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve the Butler Balancing Company proposal in the amount of $3,500, and the Mattson proposal in the amount of $2,700.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm going to stay, because I have subcontracts. Butler does work for us.
Okay, there is no subdivision in zoning applications tonight, as is there is no ordinance and resolutions for consideration. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Mr. Rawlings.
Mr. Rawlings, I, I let you get away with it the first part, but I, I'm going to have to insist that you come up and speak into the microphone.
There's always room up here for you to sit here, too.
No, that's okay, I have enough of the time up there. A month ago, at one of the meetings, we talked about the communication between the board of supervisors copying emails back and forth. Has that been improving? Everybody was going to copy everybody, all the information.
To, to my knowledge, to my knowledge, it, it's improving. I don't know, I don't know if there's something that I haven't been included in, but...
I just want to make sure it's an open communication here. Jason, do you see any problems recently, or?
Hasn't really been that many, and, and much going on.
But it seems to have gotten improved, okay.
Think so.
That was my question.
Thank you.
See, it's not that far to come up from the back of the room, Bruce.
Oh, jeez. Anybody else with public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, do I have a notice for adjourn, no notices, do we? None?
Not unless there's been any executive sessions in the past that you need to announce.
Not since the last meeting.
No.
All right.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.